Join the meeting.
And what did you say? We have to refresh here?
You know what it is, it's part of mine, it's part of mine too.
Don't let them start without me. Can we do it without it being right on board? It's in, it's in the app.
I took it out of it, yeah.
Okay.
I pulled it out. It's in the right spot now. Thank you.
Do you guys, can you refresh your, if you refresh it, do you know where the refresher button is?
Yeah. Do I have to do that again?
Yeah, just because we just made another change.
The first time it took forever to refresh.
Really?
That time it went normally.
Are you ready, guys?
Yes.
Are you ready?
Okay. Hello, it is Wednesday, April 24th at 7:00 PM. We're in the, at the Board of Education regular meeting. This is the opening ceremony. Call to order, please, Mr. Muchi out.
Mrs. Edder.
Here.
Mr. Naaman.
Here.
Mr. Suchaki.
Here.
Mrs. Schukert.
Here. Four present, one absent. On behalf of the Board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. The Board values and encourages public comment on education issues. Anyone having an interest in actions of the Board may participate during the public comments portion of the meeting. Please identify yourself on the Board sign-in sheet, which is over there on that orange counter area. A copy of the Board meeting agenda is available for review on our school district's website, which you can find at www.kaihights.org, under Board of Education Meetings, and it's also up on this screen, if you could see it from where you're sitting. Please silence your cell phones during the meeting. At this point, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, at this point, I would like to take a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
You guys present it. Move by Mr. Naaman. Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Naaman.
Hi.
Mr. Suchaki.
Hi.
Mrs. Edder.
Hi.
Mr. Schukert.
Aye, motion passes four to zero. Moving on to the presentations, recognition of March Students of the Month. We starting with Mr. Evans.
And we'll start with Mr. Coleman.
Yep, good stuff. I'm honored to be in front of you recognizing our March Students of the Month, and then we'll roll into our April Students of the Month as well. We've got lots of positive student recognition here. I actually got to leapfrog one of our kids at the top of daddy alert, so we'll call up Maddie Crisno at first. Maddie is multi-tasking here. She's probably doing training meetings right now for softball. Recognize her and get her off to, off to the softball field. So Maddie's actually our ninth grade April Student of the Month, so a little bit out of order. Maddie comes to us from the village of Brooklyn Heights. Mom is Jen, dad is Dale. Older sister Antonia, younger sister Lexi, who's a sixth grader at kind of nice middle school here. I asked Maddie about her future plans. She says, "I have no clue what I want to do. I have lots of ideas and interests." Specifically, I asked her for some of those marine biology was the topic of conversation, criminology, potentially physical therapy. I asked her about her favorite subjects in school. She said English and Biology. I asked her about her favorite teacher. She said she couldn't choose one. There are so many, I can't really pick one again. It's always the best.
Ooh, don't let that get back to Aunt Laura.
Aunt Laura actually ducked her head in during the interview and got very interested in her.
Hope she doesn't listen to this recording, Maddie.
Maddie stood her ground, so good work there. And then Christine Bennett, a Spanish teacher nominated Maddie, and of Maddie, Christine said the following. "I would like to nominate Madison Crisno for Student of the Month. Madison is positive, successful, and engaged. She is concerned for the well-being of those around her. Madison's an excellent student friend. I'm thankful to have her in class. Congratulations, ninth grade April Student of the Month, Maddie Crisno." Good luck tonight in softball.
Maddie, you gotta come down and shake everybody's hand when you're out of the door here. Express that.
Congratulations, congratulations.
What position do you play?
It'll ever happen again.
Go ahead, Scoob.
Okay, so we're diving into March. We're gonna start with our sixth grade. We're at seventh, eighth, ninth, and months. Finally, we'll hand off to Mrs. Howchin, who will work through the elementary students for March. Then we'll do the same for April. So Maddie first here, Maddie second, I should say. Sixth grade March Student of the Month, Jimmy Blados. Come on up, Jimmy. Jimmy comes to us from the village of Brooklyn Heights. Mom is Jennifer. She works, works for us here at the Kaiga Heights Schools. Dad is Joseph. She had, he, Jimmy has a sister Joey, who is a former Student of the Month. A lot of Student of the Month action going on in that household. I'm grateful for that. We talked about a potential career pathway. Said right now he's interested in his career as an electrician. Said his favorite subject is science, and again, in terms of favorite teacher, no favorite teacher, they're all good. Jimmy was nominated by our sixth grade team, and our sixth grade team had the following to say about him. Jimmy represents all the best qualities of the Kaiga Heights Elementary School. He is extremely responsible and takes charge of situations. Plus, he helps to make sure everyone is on task and ready for class. Jimmy is helpful to those around him when they need help or don't understand directions, and he works well both independently and in a group. He greets teachers and peers with a smile, and makes well-timed jokes without disrupting class. He is willing to work, that's a good balance to strike there, Jimmy. I didn't, I struggled with that balance a little myself in school. He's willing to work with anyone and will readily add them to a circle of friends. Jimmy is thorough and thoughtful in completing sentences. Every day as he leaves, Jimmy says goodbye and thank you, and to that we reply, "Congratulations and thank you, Jimmy." So again, congratulations, Jimmy, sixth grade March Student of the Month. Good work. All right, seventh grade March Student of the Month, Marissa Ullery. Marissa comes to us from the village of Kaiga Heights. Mom is Jen, dad is Dan. One sibling Tyler, an alumni, class of 2018, right? Marissa said she wants to pursue a career as either a teacher or a photographer. I counted the two. Don't necessarily be mutually exclusive. We can get you back here maybe as a photography teacher down the road, so keep that, keep that in your, in mind. She said her favorite subject was math, and I asked about her favorite teacher. She said she has two, so I didn't make her choose. Her two teachers were Mr. Tartara and Ms. DeVito. With respect to Mr. Tartara, she says, "I like Mr. Tartara's form of teaching. He has fun with it and isn't boring at all." Ms. DeVito, she said, "I really like her teaching style, plus she's my basketball coach for middle school." Good stuff. Marissa was nominated by our seventh grade team, and the seventh grade had is Mike. Couple siblings, Mary, who graduated the class of 2017, and Jake, who graduated the class of 2019. I asked Grace about future career plans. She said she wants to focus on a career in sports medicine. And for college, she said she wants to go somewhere far away. Favorite subject, she said, was math, and favorite teacher, good night from Ms. DeVito, was Ms. DeVito again. Said she's really nice, she explains things really well, and she knows how to connect with her students. Grace was nominated by the eighth grade team, and the eighth grade team had the following to say. Grace Lasky is the eighth grade nomination for Student of the Month. Grace is conscientious, she's a dedicated student, her work is always completed on time with thoughtfulness to quality. She participates often in class, consistently adding her thoughts and ideas to the group. She is kind and polite to all and a pleasure to have in class. We appreciate her positive attitude, and we are lucky to have her as a student at Kaiga Heights Middle School. Congratulations, Grace. Good problem, that's a good problem they have here. Okay, next up, ninth grade Student of the Month, Alyssa Simeonak. Come on up, Alyssa. All right, Alyssa. All right, Alyssa comes to us from Brooklyn Heights. Mom is Natalie, dad is Lee. No siblings. In terms of future plans, she says she wants to go to NYU after high school, or she goes to New York City. One rule on that, and I've come a long way, New Yorkers just can't become Yankees fans. We're a Mets fan, go Mets. Let's go to the NYU after high school. In terms of majors, she says she's undecided, but business is kind of working in the background there. What's, favorite subject is math, and her favorite teacher, she said, is Mr. Martin. Of Mr. Martin, she said, it's interesting answer, she said, "I really like that if you say an answer and you get it wrong, he won't let it go." He will have you work through it, and he helps you find your error and understand the concept. And then as Alyssa left for an interview, oddly enough, Mr. Martin came in and had something signed real quick, said, "Mr. Martin, I can't believe this. Here's what, here's what's been in my eye." As soon as I said he won't let it go, kind of gave him a nod and said, "That's right." Good stuff there. And again, oddly enough, Coach Martin was the one who nominated her, and he said the following about Alyssa. "Alyssa performs at a very high level and honors algebra too. She is conscientious and diligent. She strives to understand concepts deeply. Alyssa participates fully in all activities and has great attitude." Good stuff. Congratulations, Alyssa Simeonak, ninth grade March Student of the Month. Tenth grade Student of the Month, Dominic Rodriguez. Come on up, Dominic. Dominic comes to us from Valley View. Mom is Lisa, dad is Antonio. Dominic has one sister Samantha, who's an alumni at Kaiga Heights and graduated with the class of 2016. Dominic explained he wants to pursue a career in the manufacturing industry. He said his favorite subject in school is history. Again, I asked about a favorite teacher, and again, the best answer you want to hear, no, they're really all good. I can't choose one. And again, Coach Martin is the one who nominated Dominic, so Coach Martin said the following about Dominic. "Dominic is a quiet leader in Algebra I. He works hard every day and is willing to answer the tough questions. Dominic's performance so far has put him at the top of his class. Great work, Dominic. Keep up the good, keep up the good work." All right, eleventh grade March Student of the Month, Carson Horstman. Come on up, Carson. Carson wanted to be, it's a possibility, so he self-reported on that. No words, a little embarrassing in class. And our twelfth grade Student of the Month, Natalie Drocton. Natalie's right. Congratulations, Natalie. So similar presentation with Natalie back in the fall when she was an AP Scholar, so some of this may sound a little bit similar. But again, Natalie comes to us from Valley View. Mom is Barb, dad is Mike. Natalie has an older brother, Matt, who graduated the class of 2015, and an older sister Nicole, who graduated the class of 2012. Natalie's plans right now include attending John Carroll beginning next year, and she wants to pursue a career as a physician's assistant. Natalie's favorite class is math, and again, says, "I don't have a favorite teacher. They've all been so great here." Good stuff. Natalie's nominator was Mrs. Zawatski. So Mrs. Zawatski had the following to say. "I want to recommend Natalie Drocton as our Student of the Month. She's currently enrolled in both my AP Statistics class and AP Calculus A.D. classes. They are both extremely rigorous and demanding courses, and Natalie rises to their challenge. She always does her homework and will ask questions when she's unsure. She always, she's always helpful to her classmates. We do a great deal of problem analysis in class, and she's always willing to help other classmates that may not understand. Natalie never acts as if, as though she is put out when insisting a classmate and will always help. She is a teacher's dream." So again, congratulations, Natalie, March twelfth grade Student of the Month.
Mr. Coleman, I gotta get a plug in for Natalie too, as, well, I know this is a happy day for the Drocton family. This is a sad day for the Kaiga Heights family, that the last of the Droctons is coming through. But Natalie's a senior class officer, and the senior class officers get to pick where the lockers go. And all four officers are directly across from my office. You would think that they would be the, as far as they could be from the superintendent's office. But I have to tell you, they are some of the most pleasant young ladies that you will ever encounter, and we talked about some of them when the swimmers were up here. Natalie's a, a, a part of that senior class officer group. And Natalie, you are going to be sorely missed next year at Kaiga Heights, so congratulations.
I am going to announce our, what are we, what about the, we have March? March. March Student of the, and at the elementary school, we only do two students each month, so you only have to stay up there a few more minutes, okay? It's, it's kind of fun to see all of these students, everyone except for seniors. I have all of them in the elementary school, so it's like, you all got way taller than me. All right, so this month, we have kindergartners who were nominated, so we're gonna start with Dahlia Castillo. Just looked beautiful there for everyone. Dahlia is six and a half years old. She told me that she just turned six and a half. She's in kindergarten. She's in Mrs. Dequilla's class. She comes to us from Seven Hills, where she lives with her parents, Mary Beth and Ramon, and her brother Dominic, who's two years old, he's sitting there, and her dog, Reyna. I asked her what her favorite subject was or her favorite thing about school, and she said guidance, because after your work is done, you get to play games. For activities, she said, "I'm doing dance on Saturdays, and mom just signed me up for basketball." I asked the students this month, "What do you think my job is? What does the principal do?" And she said, "You keep everyone safe." I thought that was a very nice answer. When she grows up, she wants to be a teacher. She said, "I want to teach kids." And another student who was in here while we were doing the interviews, who happened to be a pre-K student, said, "I think she has to be 10 to do that." To her parents, she said, "I like being Student of the Month, and thank you for bringing me to this school." Dahlia was nominated by Mrs. Dequilla, Mrs. Chahaki, and Mrs. Rex, our kindergarten teachers. And they said Dahlia is new to the Kaiga Heights Elementary School family. Her smile, warmth, and kind nature have earned her many close friends with our kindergarten class. She comes to school each morning, ready to learn and eager to help others. She works hard on her math, reading, science, and social studies assignments, and shares her knowledge and skills during class lessons as well. Dahlia is an asset to our class, and we enjoy her every day. Congratulations, Dahlia. I'm asking to the tall senior here. Next, we have Tyson Schmidt. Who is guaranteed to be taller than me by the time I leave. Tyson is age six. He is also in kindergarten in Mrs. Dequilla's class. He lives in Valley View with his parents, Sarah and Todd, and his sisters Ava, who is in sixth grade, and Adeline, who's in fourth grade. Tyson, his brother, who's in kindergarten. Tyson. I said Tyson. Tyler. He said he has two dogs, Luna and Martin, and a guinea pig named Rocky. His favorite activity at school is library, because you get to color. And he said, outside of school, he plays soccer. And he told me a little bit about soccer. "We won two games already. On the first game, we won two to nothing, and I scored the first goal. In the next game, we won four to three. Told me all about it. Can be an awesome soccer player, right?" "Yes." I asked him what the principal does, and he said, "You are the boss of the school." When he grows up, he wants to be a police officer, and I asked him why, and he said, "So I can arrest bad guys." And to his parents, he said, "I love you." Tyson was nominated by Mrs. Dequilla, Mrs. Chahaki, and Mrs. Rex, and they said, "Tyson was nominated as Student of the Month for his integrity and work ethic. He is a kind, honest, and hard-working young man who does his best each day to be a successful student, a helpful classmate, and a caring and compassionate friend. Tyson uses his best efforts on assignments each day, and his reading, math, science, and social studies skills reflect this. I am very proud of Tyson. Well done. Congratulations." All of our March Students of the Month to go around and shake their hands before members. And then after we're finished with April, we'll get a picture.
Tyson, congratulations.
Nice job, Tyson.
Congratulations, Dahlia. Congratulations.
Tell me that you are our student.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Billy.
Congratulations. Congratulations. First, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
You know you can be a teacher and a photographer and send a job. Congratulations.
See, Jonathan has to hold your hand too.
Honored to our April Student of the Month. We will start with sixth grade again. So calling up our April sixth grade Student of the Month, Miguel Dean. Let's go. Miguel had a great conversation. I'm excited to share some of this with you. So Miguel comes through from the village of Brooklyn Heights. Mom is Philma, Genboa. Dad is Max, Dane. One sibling, Santiago. He is a first grader at Kaiga Heights Elementary School, right? In terms of future plans, Miguel stated very confidently, "My passion is history and social studies. I want to be in story and all that." Then I asked where he wanted to go to school. He said, he looked at me, he turned to me, I said, "I know it's a long shot, but I want to attend Harvard University." Good stuff. He said his fallback is Ohio State.
Thanks.
Favorite subject was social studies. Favorite teacher he mentioned was Mrs. Wilson. Of Mrs. Wilson, he said, "She's very nice. She has a mom-type thing happening. She works with you individually to make sure you understand things really well. I've never seen anyone do that so well before." His sixth grade team nominated him, and the sixth grade team had the following to say about Miguel. "Miguel shows an extreme level of pride in everything he does. His self-control, motivation, and mostly a deep respect for the lesson being taught, Miguel never allows his focus and concentration to be led astray. His success in school is a direct result of his strong work ethic and his devotion to excellence. Miguel also demonstrates many positive leadership qualities, including confidence, self-discipline, pride, and respect of his classmates. His kind-hearted actions, his kind words, and contagious smile make him a great friend to make Kaiga Heights Middle School proud to have such a fine young man as a member of our school community." So again, congratulations, Miguel Dean, sixth grade. All right, seventh grade April Student of the Month, Kellen Katona. There he is. Congratulations, Kellen. Saw Kellen pole bowling earlier. Looked bad, she could make it. Multi-tasking tonight. So Kellen comes to us from the village of Valley View. Parents are Mike and Shelby. Kellen has a twin sister, Nina, who's also a seventh grader at Kaiga Heights Middle School, and an older brother, Mickey, who's a tenth grader. Kellen said he wants to attend a four-year college one day, specifically a good four-year college, he says. And he wants to become a video game designer. Favorite subject was history or social studies, and again, favorite teacher, he said, "No, they've all been so good." Seventh grade team nominated him, and they had the following to say. "Kellen Katona has made incredible progress in his classes. He has become a diligent and conscientious student. He is putting academics first here at school, and it is obvious to his teachers. Keep up the good work. Way to go, Kellen. We are very proud of you." So again, congratulations, Kellen. Eighth grade Student of the Month, Jacob Delval. So Jacob comes to us from the village of Brooklyn Heights. Parents are Juan and Angelique. Has a brother, Tyler, who's an eleventh grader at Kaiga Heights High School, and Dan, who's a grad, class of 2016. In terms of plans, he says his primary plan is to be a baseball player. However, if that falls through, he'll focus on a career as a marine biologist. He said his favorite subject is English, and he said his favorite teacher is Mr. Tartara. Of Mr. Tartara, he says, "I love the way he lectures. He gives us a lot of great information, and he's very real about things. He relates the things that we are learning really well to everything going on outside of school." Jacob was nominated by his eighth grade team. The eighth grade team had the following to say about him. "Jacob consistently comes to class, prepared, and always has his assignments completed on time. He works to his fullest potential on a daily basis. He is personable and has a great sense of humor. He demonstrates leadership by being inclusive and showing maturity in group settings. We are proud to have Jacob here at Kaiga Heights Middle School. Congratulations, Jacob." Our ninth grade April Student of the Month is probably belting a home run right now somewhere. That was Maddie Crisno. All right, tenth grade April Student of the Month, Jonathan Naaman. Come on up, Jonathan. Okay. Jonathan comes to us from the village of Valley View. Dad is sitting right over here, Joe Naaman, and mom is Melanie. Younger six, a young, younger sister, excuse me, Jenna, who's a sixth grader at Kaiga Heights Middle School. When we talked about future plans, Jonathan shared that he definitely wants to attend a four-year college, and right now is thinking about a major in engineering. He said his favorite subject is math. A lot of favorite math subjects tonight. He said his favorite teacher is Mr. Robinson. Says, "I really like Mr. Robinson. He's very fun, and he does a great job of making things interesting." His nominating teacher was Mr. Durazio. And Mr. Durazio had the following to say. "Jonathan is as steady as they come. He is always doing what you ask him, a little bit more. Jonathan can sometimes be missed because he's so quiet, but he's always there, giving his best effort and excelling in all he does. He sets a great example for our kids here at Kaiga Heights with his great work ethic, and he earns respect by showing it to all first. So congratulations, Jonathan." Our eleventh grade April Student of the Month is Joe Connors. Joe comes through us from the village of Valley View. Mom is Danny. Danny's our main office guru, is her day job. Guru of many things, but her day job, main office guru. Dad is Mike. Joe has three siblings, Francis, who's a seventh grader here, Riley, who's an eighth grader here, and Matt, who is a tenth grader. When I talked to Joe about future career aspirations, he says he wants to focus on a career in law. Joe's goal is to compete athletically at the small college level. Says he wants to focus on football. Joe does a lot of sports. Everybody wants to focus on football. His plan is to major in pre-laws in undergrad, and then he is hopeful to attend the Ohio State University Law School one day. Joe's favorite subject is history. In terms of favorite teacher, says cannot decide. They've all been really good. And Desiree Sidle, his English teacher, was his nominator. Of Joe, Desiree said the following. "Joe Connors is an exceptional young man. As his high school English teacher and his junior class advisor, I have seen many examples of his integrity and talent, and have been so impressed by his diligence, work ethic, and passion to help others. Joe is driven academically, as he pushes himself to excellence by taking AP courses and other curriculum that aligns with his long-term goals of pursuing college. He is also heavily invested in community and helping others as he serves his junior class as an officer, the school as an office aide, and as a player on the football team. And if that were not enough, Joe also works nights and weekends at his family pizza shop, Rometos, the pub for Rometos." Joe is a true role model for his peers. He sets positive examples and motivates others through his positive attitude and encouragement. Congratulations, Joe. Keep up the great work. Awesome job. Okay, and then finally, our twelfth grade April Student of the Month is Taylor Schaefer. Come on up, Taylor. Congrats, Taylor. Taylor comes to us from the village of Valley View. Let's see, sibling Mark, class of 2017. Taylor said she, in terms of future plans, she wants to focus on going to Ohio State and is looking at pursuing a career in finance. She said her favorite subject is math. She mentioned her favorite teacher was Mrs. Voitek. Of Mrs. Voitek, she says, "I only had her for anatomy last year, but the content was so different from what I'm accustomed to. It was very hands-on and visual. I really enjoyed it." It was very hands-on and visual, I really enjoyed that class." And her nominator was Mr. Amari. Of Taylor, Mr. Amari said the following. I nominate senior Taylor Schaefer for Student of the Month. Taylor is a truly outstanding United States government student. Her homework is always prompted well-done, while both her assignments and class dialogue display her strong thinking and reasoning skills. Taylor consistently shows the ability to apply learned concepts to discussion topics and her events. She had the top score of all US government students on the midterm exam, and played a critical role in organizing and putting together ninth period's PowerPoint presentation of the Village of Brooklyn Heights for the Community Open House in January. Taylor is a pleasure to have in class. We're grateful to have her here at Kaiahaia Heights, and we will miss her dearly next year. Congratulations, Taylor Schaefer.
I gotta get another plug in for a senior, Taylor's another one of those seniors that's right in. She's blushing right now. Usually when I say good morning to Taylor, she starts blushing in the morning. So, she comes from a family that's relatively vocal, mom and dad and Mark are... And Taylor's kind of quiet and unassuming, and Taylor, you're gonna be missed sadly next year as well. I love having you in that hallway, and this is a great group, a great senior class. And, well, again, another probably happy day for the Schaefer family, but a sad day for the Kaiahaia Heights family that no more Schaefers. So, best of wishes to you, and I'm glad you picked the right university, too. That makes me feel warm all over.
All right, and then we have, for our April Students of the Month, we have two pre-pairs. So first, I'm going to call up Evan Henry. Evan, who's been very patiently waiting. Evan is five years old, he's in Mrs. Healy's class. He lives in Valley View with his parents, Jackie and Brian, his brother Chase, who's in first grade, and his brother Austin, who is three. His favorite subject in school is art, and when I asked him why, he said, "Because we get to paint." Activities, I said, "What do you do when you're not at school?" He said, "I play soccer, baseball, and basketball, but soccer is my favorite." So they're looking forward to you coming over here. What does a principal do? He said, "I don't know." Honest. When he grows up, he wants to be a football player because he likes football, and to his parents, he said, "I love you." Evan was nominated by his teacher, Mrs. Healy, and Ms. Petrinia, and they said, "It is with great excitement that we nominate Evan Henry for pre-K Student of the Month." Throughout his two years in pre-K, Evan has worked hard to become kindergarten-ready. He is responsible, respectful, and hard-working. Evan always does what is asked of him, and does not hesitate to try new things. He is a great friend, and is always willing to lend a helping hand. Evan loves to create and participate in cooperative imaginative play. We enjoy his creative mind and active imagination. He has been a pleasure to have in our pre-K classroom. We are so proud of you. Congratulations, Evan. All right, next. Last, but certainly not least, Ava Sherman. Come on up. Ava is five years old, she's in pre-K, she's in Ms. Petrinia's class. She lives at Kaiahaia Heights with her mom, Carrie Moriarty, and Nana. Papa. Did I get that right? And Uncle Jaren. I believe is what she said. And she said she has a hamster named Charlie. Her favorite subject in school is PE, because she gets to play games. When we started talking about what she likes to do outside of school, Ava started talking, and I didn't think she was going to stop. She said, "I'm going to the park today with my frisbee that I got from the Easter Bunny, and my big blue ball, that's not from the Easter Bunny, that's from Target. And I'm going with my mom." So she likes to go to the park and play, that's awesome. When I asked her what a principal does, she said, "You protect people." And when she grows up, she wants to be an astronaut, because she said, "I want to blast his face." She also said to her mom, "I love you." And she was nominated by Ms. Petrinia and Mrs. Healy. They said, "It is with great pleasure that we nominate Ava Sherman for pre-K Student of the Month." Ava always arrives at school with a smile on her face and ready to go, that's true. Can you show everyone that smile? There it is. We enjoy her sense of humor and infectious laugh. She's a great friend and is patient with others who need additional help. Ava always gives 100% effort to whatever she does. She loves art and takes the time to create incredible masterpieces. She has been a delight to have in our pre-K classroom. We are so proud of you. Congratulations, Ava.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Ava, you're delighted to be at the Kaiahaia Heights. Evan?
Taylor, congratulations. Taylor, congratulations. Yes, we want a hug.
Congratulations, Jonathan.
Congratulations, Kellen, congratulations. Miguel, congratulations.
Congratulations, good luck on going to Harvard.
Good luck with that. Everybody knows you're doing it.
One month at a time, right?
Think so.
I don't know.
Yeah, let's do one month at a time, I don't think we can fit a whole month.
Good, the April Students of the Month, or March Students of the Month on the stairs here with the board members. Parents, please come on up and take pictures, this is the folk tag moment here.
They're doing March Students.
March Students. Get out of the way, and let's have the parents take some pictures.
Can you change with her?
Me?
Cause you're taller.
All right, let's go, we're gonna get some pictures. Miss first.
Did you get about a hundred, Jennifer?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Bug in trouble. Yelling that way home.
Our April Students. Go away, Joe, come on.
I'll just, I'll be far off, there you go, there you go. Just happy to tell us now.
I know when you're there. You've been taking pictures for the last three years. Thirteen years, don't believe it.
A selfie? Ready, one, two, three. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Join us, come to Big School.
Yay. I work at the school, I'm like...
Summer!
Thank you.
You too.
Turn it over to me. If that's okay.
Absolutely.
Did anybody sign up?
No. Okay, so we are journeying after... It is 7:46, and I'm going to turn it over at this point to Mr. Evans.
And we've altered the agenda there, we want to thank the council people from Brooklyn Heights for being here tonight. So we're gonna do agreements, contracts, and memberships, and I've kind of moved up to number eight, the compensation agreement with the Village of Brooklyn Heights relating to a community reinvestment area agreement. We generally do these as a consent agenda, but this CRA, we've been working on with the Village of Brooklyn Heights, and actually, Mayor Mike, I'm gonna allow you to grab the mic if you have anything to chime in here before we go through and approve the agreement. Pardon?
Can I do it after the vote?
Absolutely, absolutely, we'll do that. We're gonna do a consent agenda, so I'll fly through the six other items, and then we'll come through. So we've got the compensation agreement, and the entire board has already seen that. The second thing on there is the Community College Credit Plus Agreement with Cog Community College for 2019, 2020, which is the same as it's been the last several years. ESC Primary Service Agreement for 2019 and '20, 2020 and '21. Agreement with Final Forms for 2019, '20 school year. Agreement with PSI Associates for extended school year nursing services, summer 2019. Agreement with United Cerebral Policy Association of Greater Cleveland for extended school year services, summer 2019. Agreement with Monarch Center for Autism for extended school year services, summer 2019. Agreement with Help Foundation for extended school year, summer 2019. Agreement with Cog County Initial Interagency for Educational Stability for Youth in Foster Care. Agreement with Educational Service Center for 2019 extended school year services, related service staffing, and approval of the 2019 graduate list. I would ask that the board approve those agreements.
The agreements, contracts, memberships. Named by Mr. Stu Chappie, second, second by Mrs. Eder, any discussion?
Most of the agreements that you see in there with the agencies are all on an as-needed basis. You see quite a few of them are for summer. Kudos to Mr. Burek on getting ahead of the curve with those. But again, with our extended school years, we might need a school psychologist, so this gives us the ability to call and bring those services in. But everything is, as you've seen before, the final forms is a big change for us. We're going away from InfoSnap, which has been our information system. We're using final forms in our athletic department right now. We'll be using that district-wide, we think that's gonna help us with our registration, our tuition program. It's gonna standardize our forms. Mr. Kelber has had a lot of success in the athletic department, so I think if Mrs. Connors was still here, she'd be jumping up and down for joy, because our secretarial staff has really not been happy with InfoSnap of three or four years we've had that in place. So, we needed to make a change, and we're gonna do that. And I'll leave it to, once the approval's done, to Mayor Mike to talk about the CRA with Brooklyn Heights.
Any other discussion? Is that final forms, was that, did we have that on a temporary or trial basis first?
We did it with the athletic department. We were doing, all of our contracts through the athletic department were final forms, because they had to be, that was dictated by arbiter. And it really worked so well, and then final forms kind of came and said, "Listen, we can handle all your school needs," and then we took a look at some of the districts that are using final forms, large districts. I think Manner is using final forms, I think Brunswick is using final forms. Dublin Schools, three high schools is using final forms, there's a lot of success with it, and we think that it's gonna be versatile enough to handle what we need to handle here.
And Mr. Muccios here, too, and tell me if I'm wrong, that there's a savings involved in it, too.
Yeah, I think it's...
Five hundred?
Five thousand.
Five thousand a year.
After year one, there's a getting started fee, but there's a $5,000 difference between the cost for final forms and the cost of InfoSnap, so it's a $5,000 saving per year.
And it sounds like it's more efficient.
And it just looks like their support is much better on the surface. InfoSnap's been very difficult support-wise.
I guess that was my question, because I wasn't seeing the fee or the charge of what it was. But if you're saying that it's more efficient and it's less costly, then thank you very much.
Thanks to Dave Wallace for doing some legwork on that one for us.
Yeah, it does seem to be based somewhat on our size, so we're not... Some things are the same rate, no matter how small or larger district is, and this is clearly based on size.
And anytime you get into a forms-type situation, all those companies are gonna, on a per-student base... And anytime you get into a forms-type situation, all those companies are going to, on a per-student basis, so it's going to vary with the size of the district.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing Nun Rookoff.
Mr. Souchacki.
Aye.
Mrs. Edder.
Aye.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero.
Mayor Mike.
I don't even like to calm down. I just want to point out that our entire council is here, Trager and myself, because we firmly believe that the partnership that our three communities in the school board is the utmost important thing. It keeps our taxes low, we're able to provide excellent services, and the backbone is still the school. I look at Tom and think of him and his sisters and brother and stuff, and I think back that long before I came into Brooklyn Heights, when our community was being bisected by highways, his mom and Flip Saunders' mom were very instrumental in the development of the corner where this abatement is being granted. And they stood staunch before he came through the way that it did. And this is the last true cornerstone of what our downtown will be forever and ever. So we've been working very hard since March 18th last year on this latest deal. We've had many come and go over the few years. But this one is going to be a 65,000 square foot building, a worldwide corporation that has 200 locations around the world. They manufacture electrical components as small as a piece that fits in your cell phone that we're all carrying tonight, to the big windmills that you see on the highways there. And they build large rooms of cabinetry with controls in it that they put on top of a mining truck or a huge crane that unloads ships in Seattle. And they build the entire box right there. So it's all inside, there's no noise, there's no traffic. And it's a very professional company. The company's name is Nida. So the partnership we started with, the school is going to win here with some additional revenue. The village is going to win with some additional revenue. And we're going to have a beautiful building at the corner of Tuxedo and Granger that our forefathers and foremothers were, you know, were very staunch in keeping that greenhouse as long as it could be. And our partnership goes way back to where it's... Tom Leyevitz is here tonight. Where our houses are built, the school board property was purchased long, long ago with the intention of putting a school there. There's homes there, there's homes on Marco Lane, and this will be the final peaks. So thank you for the partnership. Thank you for the positive vote, and we look forward to getting shovels in the ground. And thank you all for coming tonight.
Thanks to Brooklyn Heights Village Council. We get to sneak out to your meetings. It's nice that you guys get to come over and see some of our student recognitions tonight. It's, you know, a lot of great memories with the people in the audience here having grown up, and certainly great memories of Brooklyn Heights and that corner. You know, Kramer's Greenhouse and then, and what have you, the greenhouses that sat on the corner there for many, many years. And having grown up in the greenhouse, and Les is nodding his head, Les, the same thing, and Jen, and same thing. And it's nice to see kind of come full circle and certainly for the benefit of the Village of Brooklyn Heights. So, and you said, you hit the nail right on the head. The stronger our villages are, the stronger the school district is. The stronger the school district is, the stronger our three villages are. So we understand that it's, we're kind of the glue that holds these three communities together, but you guys are the bottle that kind of gets it all mixed in together as well. So we're just so excited about where we're going here at Cog Heights and the positive momentum we have going as a district and the three villages do. So I see some Cog Heights people in the back as well. So we're just really excited about the relationship with the villages right now. I don't know that the relationship between the school district and the villages has ever been better than it is right now, so I'm happy for that. So, thank you much.
We're going to bail.
Okay. Well, Mayor Mike, the deal I always tell the parents or the students on month is they have to take the kids out for ice cream. I think you should have to take your council out for ice cream tonight. Or Quaker Steaks open, they might have an alternative out there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you want to.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Glad to speak down.
Thank you.
You and the rest of your side.
Thank you very much.
Hiding family. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, thank you.
Okay, do you, just a question. Do you want me to go to treasures?
Yep.
Do you want to finish your study? Okay?
Let's jump into math stuff then.
Okay. So moving on to treasures business. I'm going to hand it over to you, Mr. Mucciio.
Thank you, President Schukert. Couple of recommendations tonight. First recommendation. 5A, 6A, excuse me. Motion to approve the minutes of April 10th, 2019's regular meeting as found in attachment T1. 7A. Motion to accept the February... It should be, I'm going to make a correction, that should be March. Motion to accept the March 2019 bank reconciliation and financial reports as prepared and certified by the treasurer as accurate as found in attachment T2.
Does an FYI, if you hit refresh, it will show the correction? So it'll save February until you refresh? Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Mucciio.
7B. It's going to be a motion to approve new vendors to the school district per W9s attached as found in attachment T3. 7C. Approval of transfers. Motion to approve fund-to-fund transfers as found in attachment T4. 7D. Motion to approve a modification to the permanent appropriations for fiscal year 2019 as found in attachment T5. 7E. Motion to authorize the treasurer to enter into an agreement with Huntington Bank, adding Huntington's Business Security Suite Services to Cog Heights Local School District's checking accounts as found in attachment T6, specifically adding payee matching to the payroll account at a cost of $5 per month, adding payee matching to the general account at a cost of $5 per month, adding ACH Positive Pay slash Check Block to the student fees account at a cost of $30 per month, and adding ACH Positive Pay Check Block to the online sales account at a cost of $30 per month. These are all recommended services by the treasury management of Huntington Bank. 7F. Motion to accept the settlement agreement with Keynote Property Owner LLC as found in attachment T7. 7G. Motion to accept the settlement agreement with 30 West Pershing LLC as found in attachment T8.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept the treasures business?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Naaman.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Souchacki. Discussion?
Yeah, wanted to point out a couple of updates with our financial reports. We have three revised reports that everybody has a copy of. Just wanted to touch base on a couple of these because these are going to kind of roll into our five-year forecast that we have coming for next month. So if we look at our big overall sheet that we have, a budget versus actual spreadsheet, which is T2C, the revised, we can see that the one column that we did update and revise for this is going to be column O, specifically for the general fund. What we ended up doing was, we had a last-minute addition for the settlement agreements with our legal counsel, and we wanted to get them on the agenda for tonight. By doing that, we had to update our financial reports because we ended up receiving approximately $160,000 in revenue coming to the district. So we accounted for that, and we modified these reports, so that's why we see these reports as revised. So for this report here, if we're looking at column O, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, A through E amendments to our revenue tonight. The first, letter A, we have approximately $473,000 as an increase for our general fund. And that's made up of a couple items that we have listed here, but I just kind of wanted to point out the big ones. We have $161,000 coming for these settlements, the two that we have tonight, which are approximately $80,000 apiece. We have $133,000 as an increase, this is number two, for our real estate taxes. So we had more actual coming in than what was estimated by approximately $133,000. So that also contributes to the $470,000 that we saw as an increase for our general fund. Last but not least, we have an increase in our core play students, our SF, the classified as SF-14 students. That was approximately $130,000 as well. So those are the big adjustments that we have, actual revenue coming in compared to estimated revenue. So we see an increase in our general fund from last month by $470,000 coming in, so.
That's good news. It's really good.
Good news that we have. In column X, we have a modification to the permanent appropriations tonight. Just wanted to point out a couple areas on that. We have letters A, B, C, D, and E as our changes. A is for the general fund. Now that's an increase from prior month. And we haven't touched our appropriations for the general fund as far back as 11/28/18 was the last time we actually bumped those up. So it's remained consistent since that point. But we're increasing the general fund appropriations by $25,000, and that's for the architect services that we have. We didn't have that originally appropriated in our budget when we started this year, but we're moving down the path of having an architect's services come, you know, assist the district.
Where would I find that on the sheet?
It's right... It's going to be column X, and it's going to be for the general fund. So the tick mark A, and this is pretty small, so I might have to break this out into two sheets. I've been holding out.
Notice I'm taking these out. I don't have any possibility of seeing this door.
And I need to get mine closer.
On the computer, we're able to increase it, so. The technology on the computer with a PDF, it's a little more user-friendly as opposed to printing it out.
Wow.
But yeah, I'm getting to the point where I'm going to have to go to a second sheet.
I'm just going to give everybody a poster board with the spreadsheet down.
That's right. Magnifying glass. Fortunately, we're getting close to the end of the year, so we got too many more of these.
So for the general fund, we're looking to increase $25,000, and that's due to the architect services that we have. B, we're actually going down $850,000, and that's going to be in our 200-level fund, which are the student-managed student activities. And that's for art club. The decrease is due to the students feel that they're not going to spend as much as they originally had thought. Therefore, they adjusted their student activity purpose statement and lowered by $850. The third adjustment that we have to our permanent appropriations is going to be letter C, and that's our 19 Fund Other Grants. We have two increases that make up $11,800. The first is our $10,000 High School Project Lead the Way Grant that we have on the agenda tonight. And we also have a correction for $1,800 for the Martha Holden Jennings Foundation. Now when those are added together, that gives us our increase of $11,800 that we have for the 19 Fund. D is going to be Fund 451, which is our K-12 connectivity. It's an increase of $2,700 to bring our total year-to-date appropriations to $5,400. Took a little investigating with myself and Mr. Dave Wallace, but we got to the bottom of it, and we're good moving forward with that. The last is going to be an increase of $14,564, and this is for the Bureau of Workers' Compensation School Safety and Security Grant that we have, which is in Fund 499. So those are the five appropriation modifications that we have tonight. Questions? I want to move to our lead sheet, which is T2D, the one that we have. On this sheet, again, I just want to point out where we started the year, which is going to be column B, row 1. That's our beginning balance of $12,345,668, $12.3 million. And if we look at column N, row 31, this is our anticipated ending balance. And due to the increase of the two settlement agreements that we had, it's adjusted our amount. We're looking at $12,747,223. So we started with $12.3, we're looking to end the year with $12.7. So that's about $400,000 surplus. So we're not deficit spending this year, but rather we have a surplus of almost $400,000 this year. If we look at column Q, that's our October 2018 five-year forecast's figures. And May is coming up. And the figures that we have in column N, which is our total column, are going to be pretty close to what we're going to see as our figures for this fiscal year for the May five-year forecast. If we just start comparing a couple, we can look at the first row. So it's $8,765,000 for general property taxes was the October 2018 five-year forecast's figure. And we can see our actual figure coming in at $8,774,000. So pretty close to the estimated figure. Below, our October forecasted amount for tangible personal property tax was $2,350,000. Right now, we're at $2,498,000. So that actually was a bit lower than where our actuals are coming out. So we're going to have to adjust that in the May five-year forecast. Below that, we have our state aid, which came in at $630,000 on the October 2018 five-year forecast. And we can see now, we're looking at $653,000 as our actual number coming in. Below that, we have our restricted state aid. $106,000 was the forecasted amount back in October. And we're coming in about $108,000 right now. Below that, we have our property tax allocation. $2,867,000 was the October 2018 five-year forecast's figure. And we're looking at right now $2,887,000. So pretty close to what we had in October. This might be the greatest area of an increase that we have for revenue is all other operating revenue. And our October 2018 five-year forecast's figure was $977,000. We're actually coming in at about $1.2 million. And I would say the two biggest factors that changed would be our SF core play students, the SF-14 classified students that Mr. O'Keefe works with our district to find and identify, and we get revenue from those core play students. That's significantly higher than what was originally anticipated. So that's an increase of why we started at $977,000, but moved to $1,200,000. So that was an increase right there that was maybe underestimated moving in. And the second item would be our interest. So our interest, looking back at prior history, is a lot lower than what we're actually seeing this year. So the interest was, you know, another significant change. So that's why that line has moved up about $300,000 that we can see.
Would it be fair, Mr. Mucciio, to say, because we didn't have, like, Redtree? We didn't use an investment? Is that the interest?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's from Redtree.
And the other, like, Star?
Star O'Haw, yep.
Okay.
So we have, on that, broken out all their operating revenue sheet with the interest every month that we can see as it goes. But yes, it's, you know, our interest rates have been significantly higher this year than in the past. And we have, you know, high balances that we're keeping in those accounts and a small balance that we're keeping in our Huntington. So we're maximizing as much interest as we can get to the district, reasonably speaking.
Thank you.
Just running down for our expenses as well. 8.1 was personnel services in October. We're about 8.1 right now for actual, for benefits and retirement. We were at in October 3.1. We're at 3.1 right now coming in actual. In October, for purchase services, we were at 3.2. And we're 3.3 right now, so pretty close right there as well. For supplies and materials, the estimate was $479,000. We're a little higher at $507,000. And for capital outlay, it was $150,000, was the October estimate. We're at $121,000 right now. Our transfers out, excuse me, our other objects, $239,000 and $238,000, so almost right on. That was right there. And then our transfers out, it was $422,000, moved up to $424,000. So our expenses are almost right in line for what we thought in October forecast, so. So these are anticipated to be the numbers in our total column N for the May 2019 five-year forecast. And we'll adjust accordingly in years, you know... And we'll adjust accordingly in years, you know, two, three, four, and five, as we know as well. So this year's proving to be more favorable for us than perhaps initially thought when we come here, which is a good thing.
Yes, it's really good.
And no glaring surprises or anything like that, which is.
Right.
You know, good to see.
Yeah, I mean, um, you know, again, we still have the fourth quarter to go, the last three months, but I don't see anything real significant that are materially gonna change these figures that we have. Um, and yeah, exactly, there are no big surprises that we had, there are a couple, you know, our workplace students, we had more revenue than perhaps we thought, and our interest, you know, that was, you know, higher than what we thought too, so.
I think record keeping too, and clear record keeping is helpful too for us to see if there were to be anything potentially. We would see it, so thank you again for it being so clear. And thank you for the explanations.
Oh, absolutely.
In all my years, just to plug it for Matt, in all my years of looking at five-year forecasts and actuals at the end of the year, I don't know that I've ever seen one that's ever been this spot on.
Yeah.
In a lot of different school districts and a lot of different dollars, and kudos to Matt. And that's a lot of time and effort put into that, to do the research, to get the numbers set appropriately in the first place, and then um, that, that, that's a lot of good hard work in the treasurer's office, so.
Well, it's a team effort.
Hats off, hats off to everybody in that treasurer's office.
It's a team effort with the board, with the administration, with the staff here, so it's a collective team effort that we have. And we've been, you know, walking it along every month, so we've been looking at this every month, and any changes that we have, you know, we're including them on the giant sheet, which is gonna become a poster board pretty soon, um, along the way that we have. But yeah, and we can go back and kind of look to see kind of what those changes, you know, perhaps would have been along the way. And then the uh last sheet I just wanted to point out uh is the revised T two E, uh this will be our tax revenue.
T two what, I'm sorry?
Uh, T two E.
E, okay. Gotcha.
This is our.
I have trouble finding the second one, so don't feel bad.
Um, this is our uh tax revenue sheet, it's revised, and what we did was we added lines five and line six. Line five is the settlement in blue uh with keynote, and line six is the settlement agreement uh with thirty West Pershing that we have. Um, we can see that the estimated amounts uh for both those lines are eighty thousand, approximately eighty thousand dollars. Um, we can see the estimated amount rolled up for the blue general property real estate taxes at eight million seven hundred seventy-four thousand, which traces back again to that lead sheet that we were just looking at for general property taxes at eight million seven hundred seventy-four thousand. Um, and we can see the amounts that make up um our general property uh real estate taxes that we have in blue. Uh, class one and class two real property taxes. Um, you know, we can see the estimate, which is just a little bit under eight point four million, um, where we think we're gonna be uh this year. Um, we can see our delinquent real property taxes at a hundred and seventy-one thousand, and then we can see the four settlements that we have this year. We have our definitions below of um just outlining, you know, anything in blue and the settlements, you know, the new ones were added down there as well. Um, pink, the tangible personal property taxes are public utility personal property tax. Um, that came in more than initially what was thought, and we're almost at two point five million. That's essentially been kind of balancing us out, so we've been losing money for the TPP phase out, and that's been increasing, almost doubling um in the past six years, I wanna say. So that line has steadily been increasing, and has been countering the phase-out amount from the TPP that we've been losing. So it's almost, it's been, you know, countering it, which has been extending our, you know, favorable financial outcome.
Do we have any sense or any way of knowing what if that, we're gonna continue in that direction, is it gonna level, or?
We know the.
Any idea?
Yeah, we uh reached out to the county, so we know the businesses that make up the revenue that goes into that line. And then it's just a matter of investigating those businesses to see, you know, if they, and this is the hard part, if they are anticipating of making, you know, more of a continued investment in their property to raise their property valuation. You know, it's gonna take some investigation and digging if we can.
It's hard to know.
It's hard to know.
I'd ask on the state level too, I, Tom Ash is retiring from Bass, so is the kind of financial guru, I've kinda told Tom I wanna sit down with him, and actually try to get Tom up here to sit down with Matt and I, uh before he uh, before he leaves uh with Bass, and, and just kinda go through the spreadsheet with us, because Tom usually has a Tom, Darius Sham, that, and um
Howard Fleeter.
How- Howard Fleeter all kind of are interwoven as far as the state finances go, and, and they all talk to each other, so I, I wanna see if if, if Tom's up here a little bit more frequently because of he does regional stuff for Bass, to see if he can, uh if I can steal him when he's doing a regional update over at the ESC, and come over here for an hour afterwards and say, listen, we'll buy you lunch if you sit down and look at our spreadsheet with us and tell us what you, what your thoughts on that, on this are, so you, you've got a pretty good pulse on that, so.
I, I'm just gonna echo the comments, I mean, everybody else was making, I mean, this is, it's tremendous, I mean, this is really good, it's, it's, it's nice to have the, the surplus and that deficit spend. I mean, it like, like the alignment to the, to the budget is, is outstanding, I mean, that, that just really proves that you've got the finger on the pulse of everything. I mean, you know, you can, you can actually estimate and predict, I mean, actually, to attribute to both of you, you've really got your, your finger on the pulse of what really happens in the school, and actually how the, those estimates and what they, what they're made up of. And then, you know, and then, and then you can just predict out the year, that's almost like dead on. I mean, from an expense perspective, it's really, it's really great. It, it, in looking at this, it makes the uh, ma- it looks very transparent, you can see actually all the activity of what happens, and it's, it's laid out beautifully. Really, it's, it's great, great job.
Yeah, and, you know, again, team effort, and we've been, you know, monitoring, what we've been trying to do is, you know, each month, you know, if there is a small change, we've accounted for that. So there is no big change during the year, that we've seen the small changes, and we've talked, and, you know, reflected those small changes. So when we get to the close of the year, we're not gonna have any large changes. Um, so it gives us more of a solid foundation to kind of have an idea of where we go.
Yeah.
Um, for our pink tangible personal property tax, uh we can trace that uh estimate, estimate back to our lead sheet, which is two million four hundred ninety-eight thousand two hundred thirty-two dollars, uh which is on line three of our lead sheet, tangible personal property tax. And then just the uh last amount uh that I wanna speak on, which is gonna be the green, the property tax allocation, um that has our homestead exemption, our non-business credit, our owner occupied credit, um HB forty-nine, phase out of our TPP, um which we know is, you know, going down at approximately two hundred some thousand dollars per year. Um, and then below that, uh SB oh eight, um, when all those estimates are rolled up, two million eight hundred eighty-seven thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars traces to our lead sheet for the property tax allocation on line six, what we have, so. Those are the very large amounts that we have, um, you know, and those have been pretty spot on with our estimates, so. Again, when we come uh up with the May five-year forecast, which we'll have ready in the early portion of May, that we can, you know, start to review, if we wanna take that to the finance committee first off, before we, you know, bring it to the board, we can absolutely do that, and it'll be ready in the beginning portion of May for what we'll have. But we're gonna have really no surprises going into the five-year forecast. Um, you know, this lead sheet essentially is gonna be fiscal nineteen that we have all right here for the five-year forecast. And then it's just a matter of projecting what we think is gonna happen, you know, for years two, three, four, and five, uh for salaries. You know, it's kind of easy, we can, you know, see where those are gonna go, uh benefits, you know, kind of uh easy along the way. You know, purchase services, supplies, materials, capital outlays, working with the administration to get a sense of what we're looking to purchase, you know, in different years for what we have. Um, you know, for our revenue, it's just a matter of kind of seeing, you know, the valuations um that we have, um, what the history has been, and just kind of accounting for perhaps where it's gonna go in the future, and how it's gonna lead, and just, you know, looking at it through lines of a conservative estimate, not, you know, going too far out there, so. Um, moving on, we have uh the approval of new vendors. Take a look at this. We have quite a bit, we have fifteen on here.
I noticed that.
And I wanna thank Mr. Dobbins for uh pointing out that uh number ten, uh William Jacobs, we originally had his social security number not wiped it out, but I went back and did that, so I wanna thank Mr. Dobbins for catching that. Um. Uh, the biggest ones that we have on there um would be for um the architects that we have, twelve, G P D. Col- uh, we have our, you know, literacy books that we're looking to purchase, fiscal twenty for twenty-three thousand. Um, and then we have thirty thousand dollar fitness center remodeling with number ten, William Jacobs.
Actually, actually, that's fitness center and uh um will also probably include some expansion of the existing weight room um as well. When we moved Mr. Schaefer downstairs, he knew that he was gonna lose a portion of that, we, it's a, it's tight quarters in there, I've got safety concerns. One of my things that I've wanted to do since I got here is to expand that weight room a little bit, to spread the equipment out. Um, and, and uh Bill Jacob, actually, if that name looks familiar, that's the son of Bill Jacobs, the former teacher here at Coyotes, who was my football coach here at Coyotes. Um, Bill's been with Hammer Strength and some various companies, and I've known Bill my entire life, so uh um, a lot of our equipment down there now, uh Bill has uh uh found through various sources for us in the, and uh we're probably saving about seventy percent on equipment by working through Bill, because, you know, he knows that the ghost of his dad still flies around the halls here, and he, he, he does the best he can for us as a district, so it's. When I get the other quotes, I, they're not even remotely close to Bill, so when you see the quotes come through, they're gonna, gonna say, how are they, how can they be so far off? And that's do a large part because of what, uh, what Bill's doing for us as a district, so. And quite honestly, what we have down there now, I think Bill was involved in the original plans for that as well, so.
Um, hopping to seven C, which is the approval of transfers. Um, these would be the transfers for our debt, so we're transferring from the general fund to the three fund, uh which is our permanent improvement fund, and it's gonna be for debt payments twenty-three and twenty-four. Again, the three fund pays our HB two sixty-four debt, and one thing I included in here as well is our amortization, our debt schedule. Um, so if everybody's able to click in that, um, this kind of gives us an idea of um where we're at. And how many more payments that we have to go, so thirty is our last payment, so we have a couple more fiscal years in which we're gonna have this debt. Um, and then we're, and we're.
Are we gonna be considering doing anything about that? I know that we've talked about it, and we've talked about like the grants or things with construction, and how that might affect if we're still paying off debt.
Right.
Any thought to that?
Right, it's um, it's something to explore, and we're in a favorable position to pay off the debt early. Um, again, there's been some, this amortization schedule, and I have in the green, um coloring at the top is from the auditors. The one from PNC kinda has a different interest amount on it, um, so there's a discrepancy there that I'm working on with PNC and the auditors, but um, yeah, it, you know, if we are to pay it off early, you know, we would not have to incur the interest that we have going forward, um.
Is it kind of dependent upon, like, the next couple steps with the architect too? If we, you know, when we hire an architect to go through, like, the prioritization of things, and then see if that's even something we wanna apply for? Is that fair to say?
I think one of the initial discussions was that one of the, uh, one of the vendors said that there were some additional monies available through the state, um, house bill money, uh, that felt, because we're not, we're never gonna really qualify for the uh OFC money, because of where we're at, but there were some additional monies, and then uh, because we're still paying off two sixty-four, that we are not eligible, as it turns out, so um whether or not that's an advantage for us, we, we'd have to look more closely, that, that was a vendor giving us that information, so uh we'd have to do some research on it to make sure that night, and the architects uh are, are aware of those uh different sources, and and I, as we move that direction, I think they'll, they'll give us some pretty good guidance and, uh, on some of those issues.
Thank you.
For seven D, uh, that's the modification to our permanent appropriations, and we touched base on those few that we had as our changes. Seven E is gonna be the agreement with Huntington Bank, uh, going with their recommendation for adding additional security services for our bank account. Um, the cost is small to add this.
I saw that, really small.
Yeah.
I was trying, I was saying, they're saying, is that like five dollars a head, or is this five dollars for the whole account?
Yeah, it's.
Clearly stated, five dollars for the whole account.
Yes, so we're talking approximately less than five hundred dollars for, I wanna say, a year's worth of, you know, security features with Huntington Bank that they're recommending.
Are you recommending this?
Yes, I am too. Um, you know, these are good, we have uh four accounts with Huntington, and um, you know, all these services are good. Um, the two accounts that they're recommending for ACH positive pay just means that if a hacker for some reason was able to um come in and grab our routing and account number, and automatically deduct money from those accounts, we don't keep high balances in those accounts first off. But if they were somehow able to get in there and deduct a thousand dollars, this ACH positive pay is gonna stop it before it happens, and the district would have to either approve or not approve um any withdrawal from the account, so we'd have the opportunity to say, oh, no, this is, uh, you know, no. So then we would stop it, um, if it turns out to be the case. Um, you know, check block, all that is, is we have um accounts that we do not write checks from. Um, it's for our student fees and online sales, um, those are just revenue accounts that come to the district. All check block does um for the small fee per month is um, checks can never be written physically from that account. So if a fraudster somehow was able to write a fraudulent check with our routing and account number and go and try and cash it, um, it can't happen because that account has a check block on it, so no uh checks could ever be written from that account. And the payee matching slash payee positive pay, um, on our main accounts, uh, all that does is we send a file to the bank that matches up the check amount and check number, so any check that's cashed by any person from the district, um, you know, it has to, when I, if, for example, myself, if I'm gonna walk into the bank and cash a check that's written by the district, the check number and the amount have to match the check that I have, cause we send them an automatic file from the treasurer's office of all those checks. And if somebody were to write, you know, an extra one or an extra zero on that and go to the bank, the bank would not cash that check because it differs from the file that we sent, that's separate. What payee matching does is it also matches the person's name, so my name or Mr. Evans' name. Um, I couldn't steal a check from Mr. Evans and scratch his name out and put my name and try to cash it, because now they're looking at the person's name on the check.
Or if someone were to get, like, check stock, then, and actually, could actually get another, write another check that wouldn't be as per the listing that was sent to them, it would actually bounce back, right, because it would find, like, say there was a hundred checks, and all of a sudden that, it sees one that wasn't in that listing that was maybe fraudulent, and it would bounce it back then, right?
Yes.
You got it, okay.
And uh, again, we uh talk with Huntington Bank on a regular basis, so any recommendations that they have, um, while it's unfortunate that, you know, that we have to worry about this so much, um, but that's just the, you know, nature of, you know, where we're at. So yes, we're constantly in communication, if they have a recommendation for our accounts, um, they're not just giving it to us, but they're giving it to all the clients that they have in all the school districts, so. Um, yes, that this is, uh, you know, for the cost, absolutely, a recommendation of what we have. And seven F and G would be the uh settlement agreements with our district's legal counsel, um, as they entered into. Uh, so this is more of a acceptance of those initial agreements that were entered on behalf of Board of Education with legal counsel that we have.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing on roll call, please.
Mr. Naaman.
Hi.
Mr. Sujaki.
Hi.
Mrs. Etter.
Hi.
Mrs. Shuker.
Hi, motion passes four to zero. Um, treasurer's, comments?
Uh, just had one comment, uh, yesterday, I was in Columbus for an E-Finance Plus meeting. Um, what that is, is it's for accounting software, so not the funnest meeting, uh, I'm talking about it kinda like something you can, but um just to put on everybody, everybody's back burner, the software that we use is state software for our accounting system, um, and EMIS system that we have. Um, and that software, and I learned this, uh, was created in nineteen seventy-eight. And it had been updated, you know, a couple times, and some other different aspects of it along the way, but the bulk of that software um is from nineteen seventy-eight. And what I'm hearing from our ITC NeoNet is that next year, um, possibly, uh, the state's gonna stop supporting our current state software that we use. So us, along with every other district that uses state software, which is free, um, we have to look and see, you know, what we're gonna do when it comes to that point. Um, now, the state is doing a redesign of its state software, but that redesign is currently still. Now, the state is doing a redesign of its state software, but that redesign is currently still in progress. So, they're not done with that yet. They've been working on that for quite some time. There's another software that a lot of schools are going to, which is E-Finance Plus. So, we're starting to explore, you know, what we're looking to do, you know, potentially when the state no longer supports the current state software, and schools either have to migrate to the state software redesign, or E-Finance Plus, or perhaps another software out there. So, just starting to explore it. We'll have more of a concrete recommendation probably third, fourth quarter of this year, but just to let everybody know.
Would it be okay to maybe have them come in and present?
Absolutely.
I mean, if it's beyond what you can do to just kind of give us a picture of what.
Any idea what cost we're looking at here?
Well, the state software is free, but.
But if these other ones, I don't think would be, would they?
No, it'd probably be a couple dollars per student. So, we have, you know, approximately a thousand students. So, you know, we're looking at a couple thousand dollars if we were to migrate over to a different accounting system. The state software redesign may not continue to be free, from what I heard, so the state may look to.
Maybe charge anyway.
Right.
And what part does it save?
That's pretty much a certainty from the circles that I've heard, and I, so.
Well, I, I was gonna say, like, what, how does it save in time and task and efficiency of, of workers? Is it, you know, is it going to allow the treasurer's office people to put more time and effort into other things with the software being updated and things like that? We've heard from previous treasurers too, that this is like.
How bad the software is and how outdated it is.
Right, and, and that pauses more time being necessary. So, I look forward to hearing, you know, more about this when you research and have a recommendation.
Are they going to, like, an annual fee then? Is it, like, is it a couple dollars per student annually then, right?
That's what, yes, appears to be.
Okay.
And the state software, I guess I've gotten used to it, so I can nibble around in there, and, you know, I'm all familiar with it. But I will say that, you know, looking at this new software, it's, you know, created in our current, you know, timeframe. So, it, it looks a lot different than the state software, and you can't even use a mouse in the state software, so.
This software's been in the works for a couple, I mean, we, we've heard now, that the new software's been in the works. Although this is the first thing of any substance where they, it looks like it's gonna be a reality. We, we've heard a lot of talk from Columbus, but not, 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 yeah, not so much work on it now. Matt just comes back from the meeting where it looks like it's gonna come to fruition. But in the meantime, other companies have also said, well, if the state's not gonna do it, we're gonna, we're gonna create something that's gonna be affordable for school districts, because everybody recognizes that, what a weakness it is.
Is, is there, then, when we're looking at that, is there, like, I guess, is, Mrs. Shuker actually just mentioned, is there, is there efficiencies that would be gained, like, from, from, like, the things that maybe are, because of the software is so archaic that, and it's forty years old, that there's things that you have to do manually and manipulate it out of the system before, you know, it, and that now it would streamline it? And actually, is there other, like, stronger type of audit controls that are within that software too? That maybe, you know, identify, you know, duplicate payments and those types of things that may be built into that software, where basically we can gain some efficiencies and maybe save some savings that way too as well?
Yes.
It would pay for itself?
Yeah, one big thing was, you know, kind of watching everything as they were demonstrating it. Is the fact that the E-Finance Plus isn't just, you know, a substitute for state software that we're currently using, but you could also do requisitions in E-Finance Plus, and we use software called SCVIEW. And I know Kathy Martin spent a lot of time setting up SCVIEW, and it costs a couple thousand dollars annually. But E-Finance Plus, when you get it, it has that feature in it.
It's great.
But, you know, we've kinda, we have everything set up in SCVIEW, so it's.
It sounds like in the, in the past treasurer's office, because we had the old software, the state software, we had to purchase all these other little entities to do different separate tasks. But if there is something, and I, again, we could speculate and, and, and talk forever, but I think until we, you know, see what Matt actually recommends, and then hear from the company.
Which is where every district in the state is right now. I, every district in the state had a, has a, my SCVIEW or something, because they, you just couldn't manage, and the state software didn't allow you to manage it. So, now the state, as they are developing a software package, said, well, if we're gonna do this, why would we not expand out into, into some of these other areas? So, we'll, I, we'll, I, we'll see what, how it all shapes itself up.
Let's, let's not be on the bleeding edge of this thing.
Yeah, I, well, and I gotta believe that with where they're at right now, come November at, at OSBA, that, that I can pretty much guarantee that somebody's gonna have a discussion about it. So, you'll have the opportunity, as board members, to probably go in and, and sit and take a look and see where they're at and what it looks like, and, and where they're headed with the whole thing. Because I can't, I can't imagine it's gonna be ready to roll out that quickly.
No.
Yeah.
I thought there was some test versions of it, or that people were already playing with the new version, right?
Yes.
And they weren't very happy, as I recall.
Yeah, I've heard that.
The one that the state is presenting?
Yeah, the state conversion was not.
Yeah, we won't volunteer for a trial run on this stuff, we'll wait.
That's where it comes to our finances, right?
Yeah, things are moving pretty smooth right now.
With the SCVIEW, like, you're mentioning about that, you know, that everyone is using that and, and pairing it up with, like, the state software. Most probably, I would imagine that, that some of these software companies are gonna actually have probably something that's going to make it easy to convert. Like, maybe what you already have existed in the system and, like, your history and all that, that would be, be able to be pulled in there pretty easily, I would imagine. Because it would be an issue for everybody, I would think.
Right, from what they were saying, the conversion timeline, if we were, for example, to go with E-Finance Plus, is recommended at six to nine months.
Six to nine month conversion process?
Yes, from where we're currently at with our data to where we're up and running with E-Finance Plus. So, taking everything and putting it there.
I have confidence in you, Mr. Muchio, in your department.
Well.
We got it.
You and your magic wand.
Yeah, I was going back and listening to, you know, some old board meetings, just, you know, learning stuff. And when the presenters came for the requisition system, you had the SCVIEW people come, and then you had Neonet come with RAM, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
And the Neonet person was Lisa Nash, I think, that was here presenting. And the example for RAM that she was using was actually one I had built, so it was kinda funny.
Oh.
She came and did that, so I'm like, you see, you used, you know, my one, and she was like, it's like, did I? And she's, yeah, so it's kinda a small world. That's all I have tonight.
Any other comments about the treasurer's business? Hearing none, moving on to Mr. Evans and superintendent's business.
Okay, purchaser's over five thousand, one listed there is the Neonet, and that's for Chromebooks Management Council. And actually, we moved, we moved the purchase of the Chromebooks up, that's replacements, because there's a considerable savings available to us right now. So, thanks to Dr. Kalaris for working with Neonet, and Neonet for making those funds available now. So, this is kinda puts us a little bit ahead of schedule on replacement. I, this saves us several thousand dollars if, if we do it now versus kinda waiting to do it a little bit later per schedule. So, that's on there. The approval of GPD Group, architectural firm, for architectural services, not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. That's a consultation that's driven by our last conversations and the conversations we have with the board. It brings us to that point with GPD, and, and if that's approved, I will make contact with them, and we'll start to put a plan together on how we'll proceed with that process. I know that the best committee, while I wasn't here last Thursday, that was part of the conversation, and, and Mr. Muchio has forwarded out the RFP that the GPD completed to, to Jim Whistler, and I think some of the best committee members wanted to see it, and I think that'll be a, I think GPD had mentioned to me that they would really like to sit down and talk to that group, that they had some ideas in their head, and they wanted to meet with some additional, like, the grouping that we had, to, to really make sure that they've got everybody's ideas, where we wanna head with this thing. So, I'm happy to hear that. Except funds associated with the project Lead the Way. Again, thanks to Dr. Kalaris, another ten thousand dollar grant from Project Lead the Way for computer sciences. And is this another one through ArcelorMittal, Mr. Dr. Kalaris?
No, it's, I'm sorry, Arconic.
Arconic.
It's the second one with Arconic. ArcelorMittal did the first big one we had for twenty.
And Dr. Kalaris has gotten so good at this, when I go to meetings, people are asking me how, how we are snatching up all this Project Lead the Way money out of the superintendent's, and I said, I'm not telling you what our secret is.
Because we have thirty students.
It affects our money.
Yep, and fourteen thousand five hundred dollar grant with Bureau of Workman's, or Safety and Security, through the Bureau of Workman's compensation, and I believe that's, we're talking about cameras for buses with it, with those funds.
It's a three to one match, so.
Okay, on, on that. Personal resignations, with resignation Rebecca Molnar, her work sched, she was gonna coach softball with us, her work schedule changed and made it that impossible, so we're sorry to lose Rebecca, but her resignation's in there. Employment of supplemental contracts, what you'll see is then is the adjustment, and two other softball coaches going from two-thirds to full. That's Matt Salzweimer and Brandon Williams. Dan Dorazio, for some reason, got left off of the DC list. He came on the meeting next morning, am I not going to DC when he had been involved in all the meetings and actually did go? Angelo and Jessica, that was just kind of a clerical order with that fifty-fifty on the elementary school choir. And then the summer school staffing, again, does that on an as-needed basis, and, but those are the folks that we are asking to approve for that. Substitute van bus drivers for nineteen twenty. You'll see the list there, Jim Dankel, Pam Meyer, Colleen Dankel, Ed Glass, Catherine Romzalski, and Corey Francis. Again, they, those are subs for us, and all those people have, have worked for us in the past. Student monitor employment on an as-needed basis. It's not letting me open that for a reason.
I think it might open either.
Jen Blados is a bus van driver for summer. It's Kim Walter as, as needed basis. Student monitor transportation, or Jen Blados, bus van driver for two nineteen. Extended school year summer camp special education routes. Sheila Sapata, again, for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. One of the new bus drivers that we're bringing on board, just finished some training on that one. Employment of student monitors for nineteen twenty. Reemployment of classified staff for nineteen twenty. And those are the lists that we've gone over the last several executive sessions, and there are no changes based on our last conversations with those, and those employments. And then the next section is fifteen, employment of exempt classified staff. My pleasure to recommend four employees for contracts. The first, employment of IT support specialists, Matt's in the back of the room, Dad's here as well. Matt's done an outstanding job for, for us, and it is time here, we're recommending Matt for a two-year contract. Assistant maintenance supervisor, Greg Marsnick, who's a longtime employee, we're recommending Greg for a three-year contract. Employment of food service supervisor, Pam Me took over two years ago, has done a really good job for us downstairs. And, and employment of assistant food service supervisor, Wendy Jezonowski. Wendy does a great job as an assistant down there, and those are four outstanding employees that we're looking forward to keeping around here for the next few years. So, I would ask that the, the board approve those recommendations as listed.
Can I have a motion for the superintendent's business? Moved by Mrs. Etter. Seconded by Mr. Souchaki, discussion.
Any questions from the board on any of those?
Hearing none, roll call.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
Mr. Souchaki.
Hi.
Mr. Naaman.
Hi.
Mrs. Shuker.
Aye, motion passes four to zero. Superintendent's discussions.
A lot to discuss, I just kinda got back from vacation, getting my, my legs underneath me, but a lot of things, a lot of positives, and really, we're into the home stretch here. State testing's going on, thanks to Dr. Kalaris, and he brings in Stan Durbin and Rich Sealong to help with that state testing, and, and state testing is moving along smoothly. I want my hats off to my administrative team and our, our guidance team. We had a tragedy with the loss of a parent here a week ago. Did an extremely, a great job of handling that, and, and the students are back in school. Talked to, to the boys today, very tragic for the family, but handled, outstanding, very well done by our staff here with our, with our students and the students that were affected by that. So, athletics are going great guns. I understand that our Tristan DeFranco threw a no-hitter tonight for the Redskins to go eleven and one in baseball. So, our new baseball coach, Mr. Solomon's riding the wave. Track continues to acquire hardware. They won the Independence Invitational. I always like bringing hardware home from the school down the road, when they make trophies and we take them from them. It's always, always fun for me. So, hats off to Coach Schaefer and, and the outstanding job that he's doing with that group. And this Saturday is the fifty, sixty-third running of the Cogahoga Relays, the oldest small school relay meet in the state of Ohio. And I know Mr. Murray's been working hard for that, so if you show up, we'll put you to work on Saturday. But we're looking forward to this Saturday, and, and softball's kinda plugging away. We've had a great season weather-wise to get games in, and a lot of positive things going there. And I'm getting notifications on some of our scholarship winners. The VFW was just in, and some sad news, you saw, I posted Alex Krynoff won the Voice of Democracy scholarship. And the, the VFW post that has served us so well for so many years is, because of declining enrollment, is, is being closed. And so, those, Nada Fleming and, and the members of that VFW are kinda being split up, and they're going to some different, and they've been a, a great support for us. They've come in every year at Veterans Day and done presentations. They've done the Voice of Democracy scholarships. They, up until a few years ago, did the Outstanding Athletes for, for their, which always included Cogahights kids. They've always looked out for our kids, so it's, and I think Nada was in tears when she told me, when they came in two weeks ago to, to present the, the check, they're really disheartened, and, and they're having some difficulty with getting some vets to do some service things. So, I think they'll be moving out to the Strongsville VFW, and Nada said she'll be in touch. And hopefully, they can get some of the things going that they've done it, they had done at their VFW out at, out at the Strongsville VFW. So, that's a, that's a big loss for us. They've been a great, great support for us through the years, and we certainly wish them the best as they move on. So, otherwise, things are on a roll here, heading towards the, the home stretch here with graduation in sight. That's with, with, with Easter being so late, but you come back from Easter, and boy, there it is, right smack dab in front of you. So, prom and many other exciting things going on in, here at the end of the year. So, keep some positive momentum going.
Excellent. Anything else? Okay, moving on to board policy adoption. I'm just gonna, do you want me just to wrap it into the board consent agenda?
That's, follow me, yep.
Okay, so, eighteen A, the motion to adopt policy fourteen twenty-two, non-discrimination and equal employment opportunity on the administration portion, is reviewed on April tenth, two thousand nineteen. Policy, motion to adopt policy twenty-two sixty, non-discrimination and access to educational opportunity for program is reviewed on April tenth, two thousand nineteen. Policy thirty-one twenty-two, non-discrimination and equal employment opportunity for professional staff is reviewed on April tenth, two thousand nineteen. And non, or motion to adopt policy forty-one twenty-two, non-discrimination and equal employment opportunity for classified staff is reviewed on April tenth, two thousand nineteen. Policy, motion to adopt policy fifty-one thirteen point oh-two, school choice options is reviewed on April tenth, two thousand nineteen. Motion to adopt policy fifty-six ten, removal, suspension, expulsion, and permanent exclusion of students is reviewed on April tenth, two thousand nineteen. Motion to adopt policy fifty-six ten point zero-three, emergency removal of students is reviewed on April tenth, two thousand nineteen. Motion to adopt policy eighty-four hundred, school safety is reviewed on April tenth, two thousand nineteen. And motion to adopt policy eighty-five hundred, food services is reviewed on April tenth, two thousand nineteen. Then we move into a motion to approve attendance as the attached list of professional conferences. We have the state of the school sponsored by the Cogah County, or Cogah Holga Valley Chamber of Commerce. We have Mrs. Etter, Mr. Dobbins, Mr. Muchio, Dr. Kalaris, Mrs. Houchen, and Mr. Evans.
And Mr. Souchaki.
And Mr. Souchaki, we're adding, and that's on five fifteen nineteen in the afternoon at twenty-five dollars a piece. Is there anyone else that needs to be added or subtracted at this time?
Good to go, then.
Okay, hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the board consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Naaman.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Etter, any discussion?
I, just one statement about policies. I hope to, this summer, Matt and I maybe go into a little bit of a lockdown and go through the policies and may, it seems to me that when we switched over to Neola, when Dr. Holland did the.
And may, it seems to me that when, uh, we switched over to Neola, when Dr. Holland did that and the board was working on the policies at the time, a lot of things got put into parking lot, and I don't know that they ever kinda came out. So we're, we're, I've got a master list from BASSA of policies that, or items that we should have policies on. And I just wanna sit down with Matt, because there's some on the auditor's end, there's some on the financial end, and just go through policy by policy and make sure that we're, we have current policies in place. And just know that if we don't have a policy, it falls back on revised code. So we're still kinda covered in that, but we wanna make sure that we've got everything in place. I, I, I have a feeling that due to the transition of superintendents, that maybe some things that got set aside never got brought back to the forefront. And, uh, we, really, Matt and I needed to do that, and that, that'll be a mind-numbing experience for both of us. But, uh, well, uh, well, when summer, when the halls are a little quieter, I think we can take a couple of days and go through those and, uh, and, and make sure that everything is, that we need to have in places in place, so, moving forward. I didn't, I hadn't wrote the news to Matt about that.
Surprise.
He may be planning a vacation all of a sudden, so.
Any other discussion on the policies or the, um, professional conference? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Namon.
Aye.
Mrs. Edder.
Aye.
Mr. Suchacki.
Aye.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye, motion passes four to zero. Moving on to board discussions, um, I hand down the superintendent treasurer evaluations. So both Mr. Muccio and Mr. Evans have received the template that the best committee, am I saying that right? The best committee put together, or Jim Swizzler put together, not best committee, Jim Swizzler put together during the board retreat. Um, and I'm looking like kinda confused, cause that was the one I didn't participate in, so it's still kind of like different or new to me. Are there any questions that you two have? They were at the point where they were gonna fill out the different columns, and then they were going to hand that to us. The timeline is, we look at that, we add our comments as a group, we'll meet in May in executive session to kind of summarize that, and then we'll meet in June with the individual. Anything, are you guys okay?
Nope.
Okay, and I asked Mr. Muccio, cause he, I forgot to send him it until, I, I saw him last week, and so he reminded me. But if there's anything, I, I let him know to talk to you, Mr. Evans, since you had done such a nice job with your columns, um, the last time. Like, I, I felt like it was something that we, we had down pretty well, so.
Yeah, we, I, I thought so too. We, we have an administrative team meeting on Friday, so we.
Okay.
Kinda bring the whole team in to gather, the information gathering part of it, so Matt and I will do that together with the.
Perfect.
With the, with the team.
Okay, and just let us know if there's any questions, cause it's a learning experience, I think, on both ends. Moving on to committee reports, board reports. Mr. Suchacki, I'm gonna change it up, do you wanna go first?
See, mine's gonna be really short, I haven't had.
Oh, good, okay. All right, it's easy, Mrs. Edder.
I don't have any board reports, but I did have a couple items I just wanted to mention, just as, um, uh, very happy with, uh, what looks to be a four hundred thousand dollar surplus our way. Post to, if I do remember correctly, we talked about possible four hundred thousand dollar deficit we might have been seeing at one time. So I'm glad that we are operating within our needs and our budget and that we're working efficiently for the school. Also, uh, wanna reiterate what, uh, Mr. Evans said, that, um, we need to be very grateful to our relationship with our villages, because we do go hand in hand, we are great partners to, um, to, to present, uh, a good quality school district here for, for our students. And we do need their support, and, uh, I'm glad that we, we have a good working relationship with all the villages. And then I, um, wanted to just say, um, I always like our student of the month presentations, and I just found it so interesting that from the little potty gardeners that are involved with soccer to the middle schoolers that are involved with basketball, and then the high schoolers coming from their pole vaulting to the baseball game, from their softball, or running to a softball game. We have these outstanding students that are not only great academic scholars, but athletic as well. And how the two kinda play together and give us the well-rounded students that we have here, so I just wanted to mention that. And, um, just, uh, a little note to our seniors as they get ready to, uh, finish the, their schooling here. We got another month here and that's it, so I hope that they enjoy every last minute of it. And, uh, remember some great memories here at Cogah Heights.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just, I don't have much to say, but I echo all the comments that you have. Um, I just can't believe that the year's gone so fa- so fast, and we have the, the seniors kind of graduating in a month. It's just incredible, and actually, the, the great thing that Tom was driving brought up too, and it's, and I go to, I, I, it's, it's great to see the website. And it seems like that, like, there's, there's a group of kids always holding up a trophy somewhere. I mean, which, which I think that, that our track team has done, uh, fantastic over the last, um, several meets. I think that they, yesterday, and then also, I think they've won a couple other things too, at least, like.
And they won a Fairview, they won a Fairview, and they, uh.
Yeah.
They were, I think runners-up here at the George Gross, or one at the George Gross, and, uh, really.
It's really amazing, I mean, it really, really is amazing. And then, and then now that the softball, the baseball teams are doing fantastic, uh, the varsity team, again, no hitter pitched today. They're eleven oh one, the, the JV team is twelve oh one, I mean, they're just, they're, 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 they're doing great. And that, that just, again, diversity of, of everyone, not both academically and athletically, and the opportunities here are second to none, so, it really is.
Absolutely. Um, I don't, I really don't have anything other than, I hope we finish strong, students and staff. It's hard sometimes at the end with all the activities and the chaos.
There's been years where the seniors of, the senioritis has set in already at this time of year, and, and I don't, I don't sense any of that from this crew. It just really, and, and, and there's no, there, there've been some really outstanding classes that all of a sudden got to, got to the end of April and just shut down. It's like, I, I don't know what the magic serum is, but this group is still going strong and, you know, every day. So it, it, it just, it's a class by class thing, how, how it happens, and, you know, well, hopefully the weather gets good, we can open some windows. That always helps around a little bit, you know?
This class wasn't as quick with the scholarship application.
Well, that's true.
But.
Yeah, yeah, that's, well, but, you know.
But they did, they did come through.
And thank you for bringing that up, cause, cause, uh, Mr. Coleman came in today, and I, and, uh, I talked with Artie Stallings in the Valley View Men's Service Club and, and the number of scholarships they're gonna present. And I said, I said, one of the things that is difficult to wrap your brain around here is how good the service organizations in these three villages are to our students. And to the point where sometimes our students take it for granted, that, that life beyond the bubble, as we call it sometimes. You, you go to the school districts and you simply don't see, you don't, you don't see the number of students receiving scholarships. You don't see it spread out amongst the class, you don't, you don't see the, you don't see the community, the money come from the community for students. And, and it's men's and service clubs in Brooklyn Heights, it's men's service club in Valley View, it's senior citizens, it's Cogah Heights, uh, service clubs in this, in the city, and it's, and it's, and it's, it's a paid-for mentality by the pe- citizens of this community. And you don't, and I, again, I, I talk to the seniors every year, and I, I did again this year, right before spring break, I went down and I said, listen, the alumni association gives out nine one thousand dollar scholarships. I, I, I gave them the wrong number, I thought that there were ten or eleven applications, and there were only two done at that point in time. And I said, and just so you know, I'm doing the all call. And I sent out an all call then, uh, that week to say, hey, scholarship applications are due Friday. So some students kinda come under fire from the parents, say, why haven't you, what are you doing with this? Don't take this for granted, you know, cause as, as we as parents know, that five hundred dollars is five hundred dollars, and that can buy some books or whatever it is. And, 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 you know, when it's, when we're signing the checks as parents, sometimes the students take that for granted a little bit. So we really try to make them aware of that, and, and, and God bless and, and thank all the organizations. And our Teachers Association and, and everybody that steps up with, our scholarship night is, uh, is a, is a great, great thing. And, uh, to see the number of kids that got recognized, and, and it's just how these three villages and, and our alumni rally for our kids. It's just, uh, it, it, it takes your breath away, and when people from the outside see it, they just can't, they can, we, again, we see it, so we know. But when people from the outside see it, they say, oh my God, but, you know, really.
Yeah, we have to remind ourselves, like, you know, and just how good you have.
Absolutely.
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 Okay, moving on to possible future agenda items. Any thoughts to that as of right now?
That nepotism policy will be back when Mark.
Oh, good.
Mr. Dobbins comes back, so that, I'll, I'll bring that up for discussion and.
Okay, well, I would say the evaluation, so we'll get theirs, when we get them, I'll email.
What about the, um, architecture firm and their wanting to?
Yeah.
Get a better sense of it.
Uh, now, I'll probably set that for, I think that next thing is a work, work session, I think if I, see if I can get them in that quick to maybe sit down and have maybe a little more casual discussion with, with the board about some of their thoughts and, and some of your thoughts as a board moving forward, so.
And maybe you wanna invite the different best committees as well?
Well, I'm gonna ha- I'm gonna bring them to a best committee separately.
Okay. Yeah, I think it starts, it needs to start with us.
Yeah.
I, I think the board needs to be directing it and not the best committee. I, you know, I'd like to see another community forum, like after we hear from the architects.
They're well, they, and they, actually, they wanted to see another community forum, uh, GPD did, so that may not, that, that falls right in line with.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
And again, they were impressed with the turnout by our community. It, it's such a small community, they said they've done it for districts and, and not anybody in the audience, uh, really. And, and for a district our size to have that many people at, at a community meeting, uh, with, you know.
I'm hopeful we might have more moving forward when it becomes more tangible, the actual items.
I, I believe so too.
A lot of people I heard from couldn't make it the evening just because of the schedule, and so I, I'm hopeful that there'll be a little bit more feedback. Okay, um, it should be noted that Board of Education members receive their agenda several days prior to the actual meeting. Thus, they have considerable opportunity to study it, ask questions, et cetera. Upcoming regular meetings held, um, here in the Bonner Ray Media Center on Wednesdays at seven PM. May fifteenth, May twenty-ninth, June twelfth, I can't believe we're talking this far ahead. June twenty-sixth, August seventh, and August twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. But it'll be here.
I have a conflict on the, on June the twelfth.
Okay.
So I might not be in town.
Okay, just let us know closer, I, I, I mean, I think, I think the idea is to keep rolling, um, unless, you know, and if there's anything really pertinent, we'll move it around, right, Mr. Evans, is that fair to say?
Correct, yep. Yep.
Okay, oops, I hit the same thing, okay, at this point, oh, I have to scroll. Um, I hereby, I hereby move that the Board of, the Board adjourn to executive session pursuant to ORC Section one twenty-one point two-two G one for the purpose of discussing the employment of personnel. It is, I put the wrong code in my phone, so hold on, it is nine oh three, and so we are in executive session. Oh, I'm just kidding, can I, oh, I made the motion. Seconded by Mr. Namon, roll call.
Mr. Schukert.
Aye.
Mr. Namon.
Aye.
Mrs. Edder.
Aye.
Mr. Suchacki.
Aye.
Um, motion passes four to nothing, now it's nine oh four, and we are in executive session.
We'll just go across the hog, cause it's, it's been set up.
Okay.
We're not moving here.
I almost got it without a mistake today. You guys could turn on a couple of the microphones, please. Okay, so. Here we go. Okay, it is ten oh five. Can I have a motion to reconvene to open session?
So moved.
Am I saying that wrong?
I don't know if we need a motion, I think.
It says, motion to reconvene, open session. I don't know.
Sorry, okay.
Moved by Mrs. Edder.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Namon, if we didn't need that. Go out. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Do we have to take a roll call in here somewhere?
Roll call.
Mrs. Edder.
Here.
Mr. Namon.
Here.
Mr. Suchacki.
Here.
Mrs. Schukert.
Here.
You have to make sure that we're still all here, right? And when you come out of executive session, you need another roll call to make sure.
We'd have to vote on that motion, yeah.
And then you can adjourn.
Okay, so, ma- motion passes four to zero, we're all here, except for Mark. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Sure, why not?
Motion moved by Mr. Suchacki.
Well, seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Namon, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, it is ten oh six on April twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen.